Al Diario, I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order, please. And the first item on the agenda for this evening is approval of the minutes. We have two. The January 6th, 2021 workshop and the January 6th, 2021 regular meeting minutes, please. I'll prepare to entertain a motion.
So this is Tali, just to make a quick little rejection. So on the work, so I noticed an error on my minutes, on the workshop minutes. I misspelled January. I noticed that after I had printed them out and put them all together. And so I figured I would just have that be the amendment now instead of printing out another 10 pages when I can just amend it. But you're safer.
So thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'm still prepared to entertain a motion.
This is Emily.
Okay, go ahead, Emily.
Sorry, Ron. This is Emily. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 2021 workshop and the January planning board meeting with the notation that the fix that Talia mentioned about the misspelling of January.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Diario, yes.
Prowitz, yes.
Light, yes.
Chumshini, yes.
Keith isn't here, so do I vote on these? I was there. I read them.
Yes.
John, yes.
Join. Mr. Chairman, could I jump in for just a moment?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So going forward, at the call of order, particularly when we have remote meetings, it probably would also be good to call the roll and note for the fact that Mr. Penny Packer is going to be sitting not in his alternate capacity, but as a member of the board.
So as I said, Mr. Lindelof just arrived about a minute or so ago. So I don't think that that's necessarily going to apply in this instance, but moving forward.
But calling the, calling the role and identifying who is present is important for members of the public.
Yes.
Very good, Maggie. Thank you very much. Do you suggest that I do that now?
Doesn't hurt. Sure.
Okay, having, not having really done that before, is it as simple as calling the role and we each identify the fact that we're present?
That's correct.
Okay, so here it is. We'll call the role. Al Diario, present.
Ron Prowitz, present.
Carolyn Knight, present.
Yeah, I know. Talking over each other.
Yeah, Al, you know, you, you call out the names and they answer.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's calling the role.
Oh, got it. All right, so I've forgotten where we are. Let's see. So, yes. Ron, first of all, Al Diario, yes. Ron?
Present.
Carolyn?
Present.
Emily?
Present.
Keith?
Present.
John?
Present.
Outstanding. So if I might impose, Talia, perhaps you could insert that as an agenda item? I know it sounds crazy, but I can almost guarantee I will not remember to do that.
Okay, so call the order and then roll call and then approval of minutes?
Yes.
You've got it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One, one more item, and it's, it's totally for you guys to, to decide at a future point in time. But you might want to also have what they call a pre-roll. And basically that's for the following month for the regular meeting. Kind of get a feel, does everybody, do we anticipate that person being here? That's helpful for applicants in planning their presentations. But you know, it's not on the agenda to discuss tonight, but it's also an administrative matter that if the chairman chose to include that in the next agenda, you could do that.
And I'm sorry, Maggie, could you just elaborate? What, what are we trying to accomplish with?
It's a, it's a pre, they, you know, we do that in Charleston on some of the boards. It's a pre-roll and basically it's to determine whether or not each board member that's there this evening intent, anticipates being present for the next monthly regular meeting.
Really?
Which is important sometimes if you've got an application that's going to be continued from one, from one month to the next. And then the applicant will know, oh, well, gee, Mr. Smith said at the beginning of the meeting, he didn't think he was going to be here next month, so we need to make sure that the alternate who's here tonight will in fact be here next month.
Understood. So does the pre-roll take place after the call of the roll?
Yes.
Talia, if you would be so kind. Yes, we will incorporate that, of course. Continue to bring forth those wonderful ideas.
This is Tali. Maggie, could you just send me an agenda from Charleston, so I can see what the format is like?
Sure. Thank you.
Wonderful. Continuing on, under Old Business, our first item, preliminary plan, public hearing. Two lot, major subdivision, Calzar, 56 Woodville Alton Road, AP 9 Lot 22, Calzar LLC, and Michael Hennessy applicants. So I see that this is a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
This is Ron. I'll make a motion that we open a public hearing for this.
I have a motion.
There's second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Diario, yes.
Prowitz, yes.
Lindelof, yes.
Light, yes.
Chumshini, yes.
Outstanding.
Light, yes.
Very good. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present?
Yes.
Can we hear from them?
Yeah. He's got to promote him first.
Yep. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Chris Duhamel with Depraved Engineering is here.
Kelly Fercas, attorney for the applicant, is here.
Outstanding. Floor is yours.
I, I could start. Again, Chris Duhamel, professional engineer in Land Survey with Depraved Engineering. We am here also with attorney Kelly Fercas. We represented the applicant at the January hearing for master plan reinstatement and master plan review. And there were comments that were made at the master plan that are now incorporated in the preliminary plan. This is Sessos Platte 9 Lot 22 and 9.78 acre parcel located on Woodville Alton Road, the easterly boundary, Woodville Alton Road, 404 linear feet of frontage on Woodville Alton Road and leading down towards the Wood River. The site is currently developed, one single family home with a onsite wastewater treatment system, leach field and a private well. The proposal is to add a second lot with a conforming to the cluster regulations with waivers that were granted at the master plan for less than 10 acres of land and a variable width for a, for a no-cut buffer. At the master plan, there were suggestions, requirements to increase the buffer of the proposed second lot to Woodville Alton Road to achieve 100-foot buffer. Suggestions were to move the proposed septic system within the area of testing, and we've done that. Been able to move the septic system and provide for 10-foot offset for maintenance of any vegetation. And with that, I could provide for 100-foot no-cut buffer to Woodville Alton Road. And that, that has been achieved on the submitted preliminary plan. We've also provided for less clearing on Lot 2 in the, in the rear of the backyard, if you will, of the proposed home site. It was suggested to bring just a corridor to the well and into this water service line rather than clear all the way out to the well. And we, we've been able to do that and provide for less clearing on the lot. I believe we have met the concerns raised by the planning board at the last month's meeting, and we're here to answer any questions on the preliminary plan.
Just to jump in very quickly, I submitted a cluster development agreement and also a declaration of restrictions and droughts. I, I submitted them to, to Jim Lambfair, and I forgot to send them to Maggie. I should have sent them to Maggie.
It's okay, Kelly. I got them.
I'm getting old, Maggie. I'm losing it here.
I'm ahead of you, buddy.
But Jim, I owe you a homeowner's agreement, a set of bylaws.
Jim Lambfair, town planner, that, that's correct, Kelly. I'm aware of that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's start with planning board members in terms of comments, concerns. Okay, Al Diario, I don't mind starting. Chris, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your comments that we discussed last time around. I only have one last question for you. I think it's a matter of clarification, but straighten me out. So I'm following your limits of disturbance around proposed lot number two. And technically in the area of the existing driveway to be removed, area to be loaned and ceded. Are you with me?
Yes.
Good. Tell me why. Tell me why there's the limit of disturbance line still seems to include that area. What, what am I missing? Why isn't that eliminated from your limit of disturbance?
We'll be taking the asphalt out of that area and looming it and seeding it. And after that, it'll be a no-cut buffer.
Okay, I'm pleased to hear that. You think on that notation that I just read to you, you could insert that language? It may be someplace else I did not see it.
I, I could do that on Sheet 6.
Sheet 6, that is correct. Just so that we're all clear, that there's an area that is presently disturbed that's going to be revegetated. Do I, do I interpret that correctly?
Yes.
If we could get that notation on the plan, I would be thrilled. Other than that, I don't have any other concern. Planning board members?
This is Emily. I'll just say, I had in my notes from last time, as you already mentioned, Al, the, the note about the no-cut buffer and the limit of disturbance, and I see that both of those comments from us were addressed. So this plan looks good to me.
Thank you. Any other planning board members' comments, concerns?
This is Carolyn. I don't have any comments.
I keep here saying no comment. Looks good.
This is Ron. The only comment that I have is, I don't know if it's a typographical error or what, but the town map, I went to see the zoning official, and it shows 9.51 acres, and this is listed as 9.78 acres. Do we have any clarification on that? Is one correct and one incorrect, or are they both kind of almost correct?
They're both close. We did a, we did a class one survey and, and there, there could be the discrepancy given the closing line along the river. Could, could, could vary that calculated area, but it's essentially the same.
Okay, thank you.
So planning board is all set, if I'm, if I'm reading that correctly? Comments from the planner?
Jim Lambfair, town planner. I would put forth the idea for the planning board to approve the preliminary plan this evening, subject to the applicant providing the legal documentation that goes along with this that is acceptable to the town solicitor and delegate the final review of the plan and those documents to the town planner administratively. That would be my suggestion.
Very good, Jim. Thank you very much. Maggie, anything from your end?
Just that at last month's meeting or in advance of last month's meeting, I gave you the beginnings of a draft motion, if anybody still has that.
This is Tali. Members of the public, if I could.
As soon as I'm done with the solicitor, I'd be delighted to go to the public.
Okay, I just said that because of mention of the motion.
So I think Maggie might be waiting for a response. Do we have a draft? Does someone have a draft motion in their possession?
I don't.
I'm sorry, was that an affirmative?
I believe that was Keith. This is Tali.
I don't know.
I, I have a draft motion for reinstating the applications which we did last time.
And then if you go further, if you go further in that document, there should be a draft motion for the beginnings of an approval if you, because I wasn't sure whether you were going to do that last month or not.
Okay.
If a planning board member might be able to reach into their archives and pull that forward, that would be outstanding. Maybe in the meantime, I could go to public comment. That's acceptable. So if there are members in the audience that wish to be heard on this application this evening, now would be the time.
So I'm going to have the first person, please state their name for the record.
This is Anne.
Her name is Anne Roth.
Hi, this is Anne Roth. Um, we are, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just told you to go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I've never called into one of these before, so, so we are the, my husband James and I are the neighbors directly adjacent to 56 on the side of the plot that the proposed lot is going. And we've read through, Jim was kind enough to send us, I think, pretty much everything related to it, including the, the legal documents. And this, I guess my question is mostly directed towards Kelly. I just want to make sure in reading through, I understand correctly that Lot 22 is going to be part of an easement that cannot be developed regardless of who owns it going forward?
Let me pull up the map here. The open space that, that's being referred, it shows AP 9 Lot 22 within the center, and that's for the entire parcel. But the open space that is 6.2 acres would be undeveloped.
Okay, and that passes from owner to owner?
Yes, that runs with the land.
Okay. I think that was our only question about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience this evening?
Yes. If the person identified is Susan, please state your name for the record. And to unmute, you press zero.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
William Gordon.
Thank you.
My land is located at 60 Woodville Alton Road. I am the joint landlord on the southerly, on the northerly side of this property. Can I ask you people if anybody from this place has even been here, including you, Chris? Have you been there to this site? First of all.
Me, Chris Duhamel?
Yes.
Yes.
It's not a paved driveway.
It's, it's a disturbed.
You just said you're going to remove pavement for a paved driveway. It's not a paved driveway. It's a dirt driveway, first of all. Second of all, any one of you people here describe a cluster subdivision. This lot is blatantly getting its frontage from Woodville Alton Road. It's a lot of cluster subdivision. There's two driveways going in off of Woodville Alton Road. Second of all, you've known about this for a long time, and that's why I wasn't invited to the prior meetings that there's a land dispute. They started out when Sheldon Estates tried to develop this property in 2001 with 7.34 acres. Now we don't even know what they're up to. One person's saying 9.61, and the other one's saying 9.84. And you just reiterated that, Chris. You don't know what it is. Can, can somebody make up their mind what the boundary is here? My deed blatantly reads 400 feet parallel to the wall. It goes from 400 right now to 371. 400 is 400, not 371. Their deed says the same thing. They've gained land and I've lost land, but nobody can explain this. Come on.
I can, I can, I can, we did, Depraved Engineering had completed a class one survey. We, we had received a class one survey, inaccurate boundary survey from American Engineering.
American Engineering, before they did the engineering, Bob Sheldon from Sheldon Estates moved the boundary. Second of all, why does not this have to go to the zoning board? First, third of all, you didn't answer my question. Where's this lot getting its sub, its frontage from? It's a blatant lot on Woodville Alton Road. 120 feet, when there's 170 feet available, why are they saving the other 70 feet, the 50 feet, excuse me? Because what the other lady on the other end just asked, you're going to come back and try to get another lot in here years to come. 120 feet of road frontage. Why did they up it to 225 years ago to eliminate this process? You don't even know how many acres are there. You just said it. You said it right out.
I wasn't, I wasn't allowed to finish.
Or not. You haven't amended it. You're lying because.
Oh, boy, here we go.
A paved driveway when it's not a paved driveway. It's not a paved driveway. It's a dirt driveway. And they are receiving frontage off of Woodville Alton Road. That's not a cluster subdivision, and I don't care what anyone here is saying.
Okay, Al Diario, let me interject. Sir, we've heard your comments. I get it. You've put your concerns on the record. You've asked some questions, and I think you've gotten some of the answers. If there are other answers that you need, I'm happy to try and get them for you. We don't need to keep beating a dead horse. Tell me what the question is. We'll get you an answer.
We're beating a dead horse?
Yeah.
This does not meet the requirements of a cluster subdivision.
And I'm going to counter with, yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Well, I don't know what your qualifications are, but I'm pretty firm on mine.
I know what you are. I know.
Sir, if you've got any problems with it, just take an appeal to the zoning board.
All right, Kelly.
And you can just say that?
Absolutely. I just did.
Right. Let me ask you another question. How come I was never notified at these two previous meetings? This is the first one I've notified of because you didn't want me there. Chris Duhamel doesn't even know how much land exists there. He admitted that five minutes ago in the previous meeting.
Let me, let me reiterate if I can get my sentence.
He didn't admit it. Who is this guy?
He said he does close enough.
Folks, Al Diario, look, I understand passions run high here. Let's at least be a little bit civil here.
I am being civil.
If you've got a question, pose it. We'll get you an answer. Simple as that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
If you know, you'll know everything about land surveying, engineering, et cetera, et cetera. Can you answer a question for me, please?
Just pose the question. I will see that we try, we do our best to get you an answer.
If my deed reads 400 feet on Woodville Alton Road and 400 feet on the river, 1,100 and some feet on one side and the other, do I have 400 feet on Woodville Alton Road? I've guaranteed deed from 1982.
Here's the response.
People came before this, before they were going to put a road in to make it a cluster subdivision. Now all of a sudden, you don't need a road for a cluster subdivision. The reason they don't need to prove the road is because when they get in for the road and the land for the wetlands, it doesn't comply with the cluster subdivision and/or the acreage. They started out at 7.34 acres. I've asked everybody in the town to go to the archives and pull out those three prior subdivision plans that Charlie Marty brought to my house and showed me that I had a problem. They started out with eight, 7.34, 8.51. Now they're at 9.61. Chris Duhamel's saying.
9.78, sir. 9.78 acres.
You just said five minutes ago.
Calculated area.
Okay.
9.78.
All right, listen, listen.
78.
You've never been there.
Listen, folks.
You said it's a paved driveway. It's not a paved driveway. You've never been there. You don't even know what you're talking about. I've been on this, on this property for almost 40 years. You never stepped foot on this property and know more about it than I do. That's amazing.
I'm going to stop you right here. I'm going to stop you right here. If you don't calm down, I'm just going to pull your plug.
Unfortunately.
We're going to be civil or we're not going to do anything. Sir, you keep talking over me, I'm going to have someone pull the plug.
I can't do that, but you can pull my plug.
Okay, I think we've got that squared away. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard this evening?
There is not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Maggie.
So would we have Mr. Duhamel, please respond to the issue that was raised in regards to the size of the property and the type of survey that was performed?
And actually, that's a very good, I'd like to go one step further because there were some questions that were posed. Chris, I'm directing this at you.
Okay.
I indicated I would try and get this individual an answer. I want to try and live up to my obligations. So you've got to touch upon the fact that, and I'm going to, I'm going to put this in some cautionary language. The planning board is not here to adjudicate boundary disputes. That's not what we do. But to the extent that you could shed light on this concern, that would be advantageous for all the parties.
Again, Deprived Engineering has completed a class one boundary survey, the highest accuracy survey that is required, is required by the National Board of Land Surveyors. With that survey, we, we had a budding deeds, and we found tight conformance with the budding deeds, calls for the, for the stone wall, calls for drill holes, calls for the street, of course, and for the Wood River. We have 400 foot of, of frontage that is deed, and we had measured 404.66 that is measured. We've got calls for the southerly boundary, a stone wall with a drill hole found and the stone wall running towards the Wood River. The calculation of the, of the survey for the entire parcel, the proposed lots 1, 2, and the open space is 9.78 acres. There was talk of why do we have 120 foot of, of lot frontage for the, for the now clustered lots? It's because that is what is required under the cluster ordinance for 40,000 square foot, single-family. Now, we exceed the, the, the lot sizes for the two, two cluster lots. We exceed the open space requirement for the, for the cluster subdivision. We had asked for consideration and waivers to, to complete a cluster subdivision that is less for parcel that is less than 10 acres, being 9.78 acres. We were granted that at the master plan. We asked for consideration for the perimeter buffer, no-cut buffer to be 100 feet, be less than 100 feet. We were granted that, given, given variables to allow for a house uh, be less than 100 feet, we were granted that, given, given, uh, variables to allow for a house in the existing, uh, use on the northerly side for the, for the, uh, existing well. Um, access to the site, we have two, two points of access it, uh, that are being revegetated to create a 100-foot buffer on the, on the new lot. Um, there's no provision on this that would allow for an additional lot. Um, there are conditions on the open space so that even the homeowners of, uh, that, that would own that open space would not be able to develop it into, uh, a gazebo or, or an open area or anything of that nature, it's, it's to remain in its natural state um, as required by the, by the cluster development regulations and by the planning board in their review. So, we're looking for two lots, one additional lot uh, that exists today.
Very good, Chris, thank you very much. So, we covered all the ground.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Yes, um, so, uh, just to let the record reflect, I believe the, um, the gentleman calling in was Mr. Gordon, and I believe that's to the northern property line, is, is that correct, Mr. Duhamel?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, the gentleman raised a question as to not receiving notice for prior hearings. Um, Mr. Lamphier or Mr. Ficasa, would you care to address that?
Um, I-
Okay, go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, I don't, I would have to dig through the notices, uh, when that was sent out, um, that was quite a while ago. So, um, frankly, I, I, I couldn't tell you. You got a notice for this one now.
Yes, I understand that, I'm just trying to cover the bases that were raised um, in rapid function, I think we have them all now, Mr. Chairman, um, if you would like to perhaps, if the caller is still there, see whether there are any other items so that this is a full and fair hearing.
Jim Lamphier Town Plaid, if I could interject and put a little bit fine point on that. Um, I have an affidavit of notice that was sent by Kelly Ficasa on June the 27th of 2018 testifying that the owners on this list were all sent notice of the master plan public informational meeting. And on this list, you will find William E. and Susan M. Gordon checked off. Now, they, uh, it was sent out by first-class mail, and there was no receipt, uh, or signature required, uh, as part of, according to our regulations, so. Affidavit says that they were sent out, so that was what the-
So that's, because that's a public informational hearing at master, is that right?
That is correct.
And so the notices are required for this stage, but not that stage. I mean, that, the return notices.
That is correct, return receipt requested is, uh, required for preliminary plan on a master.
Very good, and so the, the butler is here this evening, or he was earlier, I don't know if he still is, but, um, so Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, now that there's been an opportunity to have some of those questions answered and a little bit of a cooling down period, let's see if the gentleman is still available, um, and wishes to be heard further on specific questions.
Uh, I certainly appreciate your giving everyone wide latitude, and I don't mind extending the invitation once again, but let's make no bones about it, if he steps out of line, I'm not gonna be as courteous as I was the first time.
Understand.
Okay, good. I wanna, I wanna give everybody an opportunity, but treating people fairly and civilly is paramount here. So, if we can conduct business that way, and Mr. Gordon would like to call in again with any additional questions, with the understanding that we'll do our very best to get him an answer, I'm opening that invitation.
He would, I believe, he, he had his hand raised, but he's now lowered it, all right, now he has it raised again. Please press star six, and then please state your name for the record again. Again, Mr. Gordon, you have to press star six, please.
Let me go. Right, as, they won't let me back on, I'm trying to get back on.
You, you are Mr. Gordon, please state your name for the record.
William Gordon?
Thank you.
I, I have a couple of other questions. Can anybody come here now and get a frontage lot with 120 feet on the, on, on Woodville Alton Road?
I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon, could you repeat the question?
Can anybody else come to the town and get a frontage lot with 120 feet on Woodville Alton Road? Or any other road in the town?
If they, this is Al DiOrio, if they-
This is a frontage lot, it's not a cluster subdivision.
Mr. Gordon. Mr. Gordon.
Would you like me-
This is Talia, please let Mr. DiOrio respond to your question.
I am.
Okay, so, just, just hold on. So, the answer is, if an applicant employs the cluster subdivision, uh, mechanism, the answer is yes, it's been done, it was done, please, let me finish.
How do you consider this a cluster subdivision?
Please let me finish.
I'm trying.
It was done on Tom aquag road, that's-
This isn't Tom Aquag Road.
Sir.
Six.
It was done on Tom Aquag Road, that was the first example in town where the cluster ordinance was utilized in a road frontage configuration. So this has been done before, this is not the first time that we've seen this, uh, incantation of the cluster ordinance. Now, that said, is, does this embody the classic cluster concept? No, it doesn't, but it does conform to the cluster ordinance requirements.
Okay, let me ask you another question. In the previous meeting, before, before this, the agenda, the, the attorney for the town here said, "A major subdivision is five or more lots." This is one lot. Why is this considered a major subdivision? Because it has so many waivers for it, or so many inconsistencies, you, can you answer that? Does it meet the road frontage requirements? It doesn't meet the thing? They keep saying, "Well, would you, would you rather let us put a road in and have three lots?" If they do that and subtract the wetlands, which is plenty of wetlands back there, I've been back there a thousand times, again, you people know more about my land than that land, you've never walked on it, I have. It doesn't meet the requirements. If they subtract the wetlands and the road, they can't get three lots back there. So this is a ploy to let them have what they want when it doesn't meet the requirements.
So, again, Al DiOrio, I think I can answer your question. It is, while it is only a two-lot subdivision, which would typically be considered a minor subdivision.
Why is it called a ma- a major?
He's explaining that, Mr. Gordon.
I'm get, I'm getting there. Uh, whenever a waiver is requested from any portion of the regulation for a minor subdivision, it is automatic, it is automatically boosted to a major subdivision. Hence, its designation as a major.
Does that make sense?
What was the waiver?
What was the waiver, Al?
Um, I just put my notes away.
The waivers.
Perhaps the applicant could refresh us on the-
Uh, acreage, uh, cluster subdivision less than 10 acres minimum, we have 9.78 acres.
You have 9.78 now, but you didn't know that 20 minutes ago or a half hour ago. You didn't know that.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna respond to that.
You can't, because you, I'm, I'm right and you're not.
Was there any other question that you might have?
Yeah, what? Like I said, what about a zoning change, this does not have to go to the zoning board? This is a zoning change on frontage, on, on, on everything, this is a zoning change. And you're saying that doesn't have, that's another waiver, you have another waiver, it's written page four on the thing, that it doesn't have to go to the zoning board, why doesn't it have to go to the zoning board?
The zoning board is not involved in this process.
Since when does the zoning board not be involved in a zoning change?
This is not a zoning change.
It's not a zoning change, my property, I have 400 feet on Woodville Alton Road. If I wanted to get another lot off here, I'd have to get a zoning change to variance, to, to, to adjust my frontage. These people are going with 120 feet, what is the other 50 feet over there for? What are they saving out for, to put a road in later like Sheldon had when he tried to subdivide the thing? To put more lots in the back, and they're gonna come back for another lot?
So I believe your question had to do with the involvement of the zoning board. My response was, the zoning board is not involved in this process.
The zoning board turned this down prior two or three times, when Sheldon Estate, Lowwood Estates, Wood River Estates came in under three different lanes, under three different land acreage. The things are in the archives of the town hall, and nobody can get them for me. I can prove my point. My deed reads 400 feet, I'm at 371 currently.
Is there another question in there?
They moved the boundary.
Is there another question?
Nobody wants to understand that. Uh, yeah, there is a question, I'm asking you, how you can just come in and move boundaries?
I've already discussed the fact that the planning board does not adjudicate boundary issues. If you have a boundary problem, I suggest a civil remedy.
Well, we do have a boundary problem, because Chris Duhamel said prior in this discussion, he didn't even know how many acres were there. If it was 9.61, if it was 9.78, if it was 100.
I don't believe that's an accurate representation. What's your, what's the next, what's the next question?
I'm getting nowhere here, because this is all cut and dried to begin with. My next question is, why wasn't I notified to the previous meetings? When you muted me, you discussed it in front of me, and I couldn't even make a comment. I was not notified, Al. I got notified on Tuesday this week, last week, excuse me, of this, which gives me eight days to get my ducks in a row. And now you're saying I gotta get a Class 1 survey, I've gotta do this, I've gotta do that, can you do that in eight days?
So, my understanding-
Do that in eight days.
My understanding was that we have an affidavit from the applicant's counsel indicating that notice was previously distributed on, I-
And that's a lie, that is a lie. I don't care who he is or what he is. I never received any notice. If I was, I was at every meeting when Sheldon was trying to subdivide his property. Why wasn't I at these meetings if I was notified? I was not notified. So, I was another question. Was when I wasn't. If I was at every meeting prior to this, I would have been at these, trying to put a stop to it. They're trying to take two and a half acres of my property, and nobody seems to care, except for me. When I've got it in writing, what I have, 400 feet down the stone wall, in the front, in the back. Right now, my current thing is at 371 feet. They said at a town meeting, which we can't seem to get the minutes of that meeting either, because nobody wants to produce it, that they only had 407 four, seven feet four inches, and I had 403 feet two inches, and I asked Dan Carter if 451 was more than 407, and they walked out of the meeting at the zoning board. That's why you don't want it to go to the zoning board, because the zoning board is gonna shut this down, and you know it. Again, Chris Duhamel, don't even know how much land's here, it's a paved driveway, it's a dirt driveway, it's not even a paved driveway, he's never been there. I've been on my property for 40 years, I know where the boundaries are, I know where they were, I know where they are now, they moved it.
Mr. Gordon, I am going to reiterate Mr. DiOrio's suggestion. You've got a problem with the boundaries, then hire an attorney, hire an attorney, file suit in Superior Court in a title-clearing action, we will meet you there, and we will prove that what you're talking about is baloney, okay? That's the long and the short of it.
How many times have you been on this property?
I don't need to be on the property.
Yeah, you do.
No, I don't.
You're all mouth, you can't back up in anything you're saying.
Yes, I can, go to Superior Court, Mr. Gordon, and I will back it up.
400 feet.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
400 feet, dude.
The only mouth I hear is Gordon's.
Okay, so we're right back to where we started, where it's, which is where I did not want to go. So listen, I've extended every courtesy here, if there are questions, I've tried to get you answers. I've heard your concerns, I don't want you to tell me that I don't care, we do care, otherwise we wouldn't try and get you answers.
I, I have one question, one more question for y'all.
Right ahead.
Is 371 less than 400, can you answer that?
What, what, what is the value to my response, I don't-
And you answer the question, is 371 less than 400?
I, I don't, I don't see the value of a response.
Everybody, does anybody else see the value of the response?
No.
You don't, of course, you don't want to.
Okay, so I-
371 is less than 400.
Let's go to Superior Court, Mr. Gordon.
371 is less than 400, nobody can answer that?
Let's go to Superior Court.
Go to Superior Court, you're ass. 371 is more than 400, buddy.
Mm-hmm.
Know what I mean?
Hey, hey guys, this is Carolyn Light. Can we, can we move on?
Yep, we're moving.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, all right, so I think we've approached just about everybody this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's me again. So, in the event that Mr. Gordon is still listening, um, there was a suggestion here that, um, town officials were withholding records, uh, and I do believe that should probably be addressed, and my response to that is all town records are available to any member of the public by filing a public records request. Um, I would, if it's a zoning record, I would direct the gentleman to, uh, the town clerk and/or the zoning clerk, uh, to assist him in that endeavor. Um, typically, they would like to have an idea as to what is the timeframe of the, that they should be looking, or under what name for the records, but those are certainly, um, available, um, to him. And finally, the issue in regards to his property, I think what I was taking from that was that he's, there's an allegation that someone's stealing his land, and, uh, the answer to that question, as the chairman rightly pointed out, is not a, an issue that is within the planning board's jurisdiction, that it is, in fact, what Mr. Ficasa has suggested, that is a civil matter, um, and that he would need to take the appropriate action to protect whatever rights he believes he has. Uh, all that having been said, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you very much for, um, allowing the questions, um, and I do believe it is time for the board to move on.
Okay, I could not have stated that better myself. So, uh, after all this, I believe I'm prepared to, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing and move on to a motion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing, this is Ron.
I have a motion.
Second, Keith here.
I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, DiOrio, yes.
Prowitz, yes.
Alindelore, yes.
Light, yes.
Chumshini, yes.
Thank you very much, I'm prepared to entertain a motion.
Before we move on-
I'm sorry, go right ahead, Ron, yes.
Uh, thank you, this is Ron Prowitz. Before we move on, I have a question for, uh, Attorney Hogan.
Yes.
Would it be inappropriate if I was to meet with Mr. Gordon with a set of plans that I have and show him what we're talking about, where everybody's going with this?
Um-
You know, I'd be glad to meet with him at his convenience and show him these plans where the 400 and the 371 have a conflict.
I'm not sure to what end, um, and, um-
I'm just thinking of throwing oil and troubled waters in, so to speak.
Well, you know, I, unless you're a registered land surveyor and that you drew the plan, I'm not sure that it has much value, uh, number one, and number two, um, while one individual of the planning board meeting with a member of the public, um, doesn't violate open meetings, um, it does violate, um, the fact that all of the aspects of an application need to be discussed and vetted at the public meeting. So it would be my recommendation that you do not undertake such a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Al DiOrio, I was about to inquire, did anyone, uh, was anyone able to locate the- So, Al DiOrio, I was about to inquire, did anyone, was anyone able to locate the draft motion or at least the skeletal remains of a motion? Yeah, the last name Ron.
This is Emily. I've got something in front of me.
There we go. Very good.
I could take, take a whirl. I move to approve the preliminary plan for the two lot cluster subdivision presented by Calzar LLC for property located at 56 Woodville Alton Road, also known as Plat 9 Lot 22, with the following findings of facts. Findings of fact, number one, Calzar LLC is the applicant and owner of the subject property by deed recorded in book 532, page 132, as represented by note two on sheet three of six of the plans dated December 23, 2020. Number two, by unanimous vote of four to zero, the applicant was granted master plan approval on September 4, 2018 for a two residential subdivision lot and open space lot. The approval expired but was reinstated by the planning board on January 6, 2021. The master plan approval incorporated two waivers, one reducing the required size of the overall lot for a cluster subdivision from 10 acres to 9.5 acres. And two, one that reduced 100 foot perimeter buffer to a variable width buffer of substantially 100 feet on the west side, 50 feet on the south side, 100 feet on the north side, 100 feet on the east side. Based on input from the planning board on January 6, these waivers were further specified to include a no cut buffer on the west side as close to 100 feet as possible and a reduced limit of disturbance on proposed lot two. So as a result, the planning board makes the following findings, that each subdivision is consistent with the requirements of the Hoppington Comprehensive Community Plan and satisfactorily addresses the issues where there may be inconsistencies. Each lot in the subdivision conforms to standards and provisions of the Hoppington Zoning Ordinance. There will be no significant negative environmental impacts for the proposed development as shown on the final plan with all required conditions of approval. The subdivision as proposed will not result in the creation of individual lots with such physical constraints to development that building on those lots according to pertinent regulations and building standards would be impracticable. All proposed land developments in all subdivision lots shall have adequate and permanent legal access to a public street. Each subdivision provides for safe circulation and pedestrian and vehicular traffic, for surface water runoff control, for suitable building sites, and for preservation of natural, historical, or cultural features that contribute to the attractiveness of the community. And the design and location of the streets, building lots, utilities, drainage improvements, and other improvements in each subdivision minimize flooding and soil erosion. This approval is also conditional on the remaining legal documents being filed and provided in accordance with the solicitor's guidance. And we then delegate final review of those documents to the town planner.
Well done. Good motion. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Carolyn. Can I chime in?
Actually, actually, there should probably be a second for discussion. And then we can discuss. Yes?
Correct.
So let's have a second for discussion.
Okay. I'll have a second for discussion.
Very good. Now we call for further discussion when you chime in.
Okay, the plans that we're approving are dated 111, 2021. Not the December plan?
Yes, Jim is giving me the thumbs up.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion? DiOrio, yes?
Prowitz, yes.
Lindolo, yes.
Light, yes.
Chumshini, yes.
Okay, very good. There you have it. Go forth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, under new business. A pre-application, eight lot major subdivision, Bobcat Trail, 206 Gunk Hill Road, AP 21 Lot 3C, Bobcat Realty LLC applicant. Does the applicant, the end of the representative present?
Mr. Duhamel, just have, oh, I see that he's raised his hand.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you. Just please state your name for the record once Al is finished introducing.
Yep. Okay.
We can hear you, David. Oh, now you're on mute.
All right, how's that?
Perfect.
We hear you. You have the floor.
All right, Chris, if you just want to do a little introduction and then, then maybe I can speak, whatever you want to do.
Certainly, Chris Duhamel, professional engineer and land surveyor with Dupree Engineering. With me is David De Amber, the owner of the, of the property. We asked for a pre-application plan meeting to discuss different challenges this property has. I'll start by introducing that this is a such as Plat 21 Lot 3C, a 20 acre parcel on Skunk Hill Road. There's approximately 40 feet of width for frontage access to Skunk Hill Road. The parcel, the parcel is shaped so that there is a reserve strip, 40 foot or greater, 40 to 43 feet in width, that runs 365 feet along the frontage lot. Then it opens up into a 20 acre parcel. This parcel is a remainder parcel where all the frontage lots along Skunk Hill Road were carved out. There were nine frontage lots that were cut out in succession. So senior rights, senior first rights to all meets and bounds of the described lot has to be maintained by the frontage lots. And then whatever is left would go to this remainder parcel, this 20 acre parcel. I believe that they had tried to reserve 50 feet in order to meet the requirements of a public road defined in the Hoppington subdivision regulations. Initial survey that's been completed by Dupree Engineering has shown that there's 40 feet and then opening up 43 feet. Well, we're here today to consider subdivision. Initially, you know, way back, this parcel had received approval for one single lot with a variance of 50 feet. It was requested in 2003 to do a subdivision, provide for a new public road to allow for the, the required frontage in an R80 zone. That was evaluated and considered not to be approvable by the planning board. It was sent to court. I'm not here to address the court cases of later on in the, in the master subdivision or another pre-application plan. Attorney Landry will, will assist. He was the original attorney that worked for the concerns before David De Amber had purchased this parcel. We're here tonight to look at alternatives subdivision. In 2003, 2006, we had considered a cluster subdivision. Those plans remained available to Mr. De Amber, and he felt very strongly that, given the character of the surrounding lots, the character of the, of the rural character of the area, that 80,000 square foot would be a minimum sized lot that, that should be built in this area. So we provided for a plan that shows 40 foot right of way, full pavement width as required by the subdivision regulations. And then to have conforming R80 lots of 225 foot of, of frontage, 80,000 square foot or greater of lot area. We have 1,300 feet of, of road being proposed with eight separate lots. The inclusionary zoning would, would kick in. So if this were approved, we could potentially identify two of these lots as, as, as affordable lots. Or we could come back to you with another pre-app and have 10 lots shown, meeting the 20% required. The lots are shown to be in areas that would provide onsite wastewater treatment systems, onsite private wells for each lot in a drainage area on lot six that would accommodate the, the proposed roadway. Again, we're, we're at the very beginning stages of this. Different options are being considered. And probably the biggest concern or question would be a waiver for the width of the right of, right of way. We would provide for, you know, all with utilities within the right of way at 40 feet, but we would need a waiver given the constraints that the frontage lots have, have encroached upon to have, have a minimal 40 foot right of way. David, do you want to help?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can let.
State your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Dave De Amber with Bobcat Realty. We, we've contacted Bill Landry about this. He, he worked on it extensively in years past for the previous owner. And he, he's pretty sure they worked up a solution to it. You know, it went to court and it, and it came back that the planning board had the authority to, to create the road that would service the new lots. You know, so I'll let him speak about how they, they solved that issue. There is an issue. We will need to ask for a 40 foot wide road instead of a 50 foot wide road. But I'll, I'll, I'll let him speak, speak to that at, at some time. The, the other things is, you know, when we met with Jim, he had asked me what I, what I was looking to do here. We're looking to get, you know, eight lots. We're not looking to, to build this as a, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a developer. I'm looking to move there. I'm looking to move into one. I've got some interest in other ones from people who, who I know and some family. And we were hoping maybe to sell off two or three and try to fund the project. So, you know, we're not building cookie cutter. We're not going to go in and clear cut. We're, you know, we were looking to get eight conventional lots, you know, larger lots. That, that's why Chris said, you know, we touched on the cluster, but to me, the, the conventional was a, was a better option. But we, we'd welcome your input. You guys ultimately, you know, will, will be faping what we do here. So, you know, we would, we would ask, you know, for the 40 foot waiver, maybe we can, maybe we can do something better. Maybe we can put more sidewalk than is required. Maybe we could put street lighting in. You know, we, we'd be amenable to build it like I'm going to live there because I, I do intend to, to take a lot in a corner and, and live there. So, you know, it's not just the developer looking to get what we can get. You know, we, we've got an interest in the lot. So, I don't know if you've got any questions. We touched about the, the affordables. I haven't done enough research to find out, you know, if, what it'll cost to build the affordable. Obviously, I don't, don't need to make money on it, but I wouldn't want to lose either. So we might come back to you and ask for five conventional lots. Or, or we might ask for eight and maybe, maybe we just divvy it up a little bit and put two more in, two more one acre lots, make them affordable. Or maybe we make, you know, a total of nine, two affordables. That, that's where we're, we're here tonight to kind of ask, what are your thoughts? And, you know, what, what do you think we will be required to do? 10 fit on the conventional, I mean, on the cluster. But to me, the, you know, by the time you incorporate the no cut buffers, by the time you put the setbacks in and you're down at one acre lots, it, it really just becomes a tight cookie cutter kind of neighborhood. So we were hoping to space it out and go with conventional, but we still need to be compliant and fit the affordable requirement in there. So we'd ask, you know, your opinion on what direction you want us to go when we come back the next time you want to see. Because, you know, Chris can, Chris can design anything you need. And again, I know we have the, the driveway issue, but Bill Landry can work that out.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So why don't we start with the planning board members? And I'd, I'd be happy to lead off. Again, this is Al DiOrio. So I have two, two concerns. The 40 foot entrance right of way gives me pause. And it gives me pause not because technically a roadway can't be fit in there. I'm concerned that, I'm concerned about the issue of precedent. And perhaps Maggie can begin to consider that when I come back to that topic.
Did you say precedent?
Yes.
Okay.
What my concern would be here is that planning board says, sure, we'll, we'll reduce our requirement here for you from 50 to 40 feet. And the next thing you know, everyone in town who has a 40 foot strip is coming for the planning board looking for the very same thing. So if we can address that concern, I might be a little bit more comfortable. My second concern is your approach to conventional versus cluster. So if I'm not mistaken, Jim can straighten me out if my memory is, is misdirected, is that you have to prove to us that a conventional subdivision is somehow superior to a cluster. So just because you think a cluster, a conventional subdivision is a good idea, doesn't necessarily sway my thinking. We just had a very lengthy workshop with regards to this very topic. And so it would certainly be my advice that we start by looking at a cluster project. And then the planning board can decide if your conventional format is somehow superior. I think you have, I think you're pushing the rock uphill there myself, but I don't know the site well enough at this point. So those are my two big concerns. I'd like to hear from the other planning board members and then we'll circle back.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
Margaret Hogan, Solicitor. So I just wanted to correct the record slightly. And I don't think the applicant misspoke on purpose, certainly not. But the Superior Court action that took place did not grant any rights or approvals to the road, as I understood to be what he said. Basically, what happened there was the planning board refused to hear the application. And because of the zoning board's prior limitation, that the property not be further subdivided. And the, and the, and you had some advice there that this was the doctrine of administrative finality kicking in. And the court said, no, it's not. And the planning board couldn't have ruled on a zoning matter. So this comes to you at square zero. So you can forget really all the prior proceedings. This comes to you as the applicant having a 40 foot width and requesting their relief and proposing what he's proposing. But there was no Superior Court approval in any way, shape, or form of the ability to have a 40 foot width roadway.
Good. Thank you for that clarification.
I understand, I understand that is correct. That you're right. You're right. You corrected me.
So other planning board members, let's hear your thoughts, please.
Okay, this is Ron. I'll go if it's all right. I'm looking at page four. The 40 foot as opposed to 50 foot road, aside from that, that's something that isn't involved in my way of thinking right now. That's up to the, the final decisions. This eight lot division here, whether we call it a subdivision or a cluster, or however you want to word it, looks good. Now, the affordable housing. Is there an availability to make one of these lots, instead of a single family home, a duplex to cover the subdivision? And that's, I'm sorry, to cover the affordable housing regulations? The next thing is on one of the pages here that was in this packet. The next thing is on a, one of the pages here that was in this packet, the alternative things, this is, I would like to know how the applicant plans to abide by these regulations. Our ordinance allows an applicant to create these units through a number of different avenues. For example, number four looks good to me. There are other buildings, residential dwellings in town that are vacant, some that need to be upgraded and put into service. Is that a viable option?
I, I would be open to, to really anything. Um, you know, I, I, I like the idea of a duplex. It's something I never even thought of. Um, you know, we, we could do more than one duplex. We could blend them in. We, you know, we, I would be open to anything. And, and off, off-site works for me too, you know? Um, maybe I have an edge there too, you know? Um, I don't know if you know, but my family owns the quarry in Richmond and the concrete plant. And, you know, that, that's one of the reasons I want to move down here is, you know, we're close to where I work. So, maybe we have an edge to come into town and, and do something like that. That, that's a great idea. I never even considered that.
I, I brought that up because, you know, there are homes in Hopkinton, in Hope Valley, particularly right on Main Street, that are vacant.
Yeah.
Other families could be put in there. They could be brought up to code. There's, there's a lot that could, that could be done. And in my way of thinking, that's, that's a double-edged sword. It takes care of the affordable housing things and it helps to spruce up the community a little bit and give nice places to let the people that, uh, that really need it.
Yeah, I, I would be absolutely open to that. That, that's great. Maybe.
Hey, other planning board members.
This is Emily. Um, I would echo the request to see alternative, um, layout designs such as cluster, uh, configuration for this. I think that'll be good for us to see. Um, I also had a thought about the 40-foot width of this sort of remainder parcel section here. And it occurred to me that, you know, we cannot, well, a lot, maybe we can if there's, if there's notes. But I didn't, I didn't have the thought process of the planning board that created this subdivision. I don't have that knowledge in mind, but did someone create that on purpose to preclude a road being put in? Um, and give it those dimensions so that a road would not be put in, into that unit? Um, so I was just thinking about the process by which this, this particular piece of property was created and, and didn't want to, um, you know, create an exemption for the very thing that a previous planning board was trying to prevent. So, that was my only thought about that.
Yep. I, I would probably let Bill Landry address that. Um, one thing to note is that I don't believe, and maybe, maybe Chris can, can correct me. I don't believe we need to have a 40-foot wide road. I believe we could do 50-foot wide road. I believe the issue of the 40 feet is, is in the frontage itself. And I also believe that there are recorded easements for radiuses. So, and, and again, you know, we can talk about it. We really should be talking about all this later when, when we can get Bill with us. He's, he's out of the country.
Um, I, I can jump in real quick. Um, Dave, the lots were created by a planning board review as is required since, uh, 1990-something. Al, you, you were, you were part of the change in the state law. Um, they required.
Early 90s, early 90s.
They were, they were cut out as frontage lots where the meets and bounds, uh, showing the minimum frontage and the minimum area was just, just by one recorded lot after another recorded lot. There wasn't a plan and there wasn't a, certainly a master plan of, of the remainder lot. All that is required, you know, by law today. So, it's, it's our research that this should have been a 50-foot right of way, but because, because the lot squeezed in, um, from either direction, you know, ho- holding known monuments, called for monuments, that's how the 40-foot, uh, was left.
And so, Chris, Al DiOrio again. So, let me just interject. So, I, I appreciate this is a pre-application. Have you actually gone through the exercise of, uh, putting the senior rights together in the order that these parcels were cut out to confirm that there's only 40 feet left?
Well, yes. Uh, after the, the court case, we were authorized to do, uh, the, the survey and we, we put the, the parcels in and, uh, you know, the, the pre-app plan that the board had seen back in 2006 had a 50-foot access road. And, uh, you know, once we started doing the survey, we recognized it was an issue. Um, we haven't, we haven't recorded a plan yet, but we've done the fieldwork and the deed analysis to represent to David that this, this is an issue.
And Chris, one last question, Al DiOrio again. So, is the 40-foot width consistent throughout as we move from Skunk Hill Road to the east? Or is there, uh, a, a diversion, if you will, in the property lines? Does that 40 feet increase at all throughout that first, uh, 365, 67 feet?
It does. It goes from 40 feet at the Skunk Hill frontage to, uh, midway 42 to the, to the opening 46.
Okay, so then just to be clear, Al DiOrio again, your request for the 40 feet is only at the frontage? Or the, let me, let me rephrase, at the intersection of Skunk Hill Road? And then as the right of way moves in an easterly direction, it's actually going to increase until it reaches something like 46 feet?
Yes, and then from there on, onward, it could be, uh, 50-foot minimum. And as Dave said, there's this turning radiuses that are deeded, uh, easements over the existing lots would allow for, uh, proper construction of, uh, curb radiuses.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one item. Um, and I apologize because I'm not as familiar with the Hopkinton zoning regulations as of yet. I'll get there. Um, but if the 50-foot road width is a requirement also within the zoning ordinance, the planning board will have to engage in, uh, I hate to use the term, but the precedence of approvals process. Whereas it comes here, then it will go to zoning for a dimensional variance and then come back to planning. If that's applicable. If it's not in the zoning ordinance, then it would stay with you as a waiver. I don't know if Jim Lafferty might know that off the top of his head. Um, call that to your attention.
Yeah, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner. Off the top of my head, Maggie, I would say that there's no zoning requirement for a 50-foot right of way. That's a subdivision regulation requirement.
Okay.
Do we, Al DiOrio, do we work to make sure that that's an absolute or?
Yeah, we would need to confirm that.
Uh, Dave, Dave D'Embra, um, speaking to what, uh, Emily said, I believe that when they recorded the turning radiuses, that, and, and I don't even know if, if we should even keep saying it or, or whatnot, but I believe that those turning radiuses were recorded with, with both lots on each side, knowing that there would be the ability to bring a road in there. Um, at the time they, they created that lot, they elected not to. And again, this was all really stuff. If we're going to talk about the driveway, you know, I, we probably should have, uh, Bill Landry here with us. You know, we could almost just, just put it off till, till he's able to address these concerns because he's done countless hours of work on it. And, you know, I, I don't want to waste everybody's time. He, he knows the solution.
Uh, I had, Al DiOrio, so, I'm sorry, was the question David?
Yes.
So, David, there's certainly no wasted time here. You're going to get the benefit as, as is required there in the pre-application of the planning board's initial thoughts. So, yes, I appreciate that there are some, uh, dangling details that we'll return to, but issues like, uh, you know, getting a cluster arrangement before us and things along those lines, that's not wasted effort. That's, that's right on point.
Understood.
So, any other planning board members care to chime in here?
Uh, Keith here. No questions, but, um, really, uh, I guess defer to your guidance, uh, Mr. Chairman and our solicitor. Thank you.
This is John.
This is Carol and no comments. Carol and Mike, no comments. Thank you.
John, I just want to repeat, um, what, what Al said about setting precedent. Um, I have heard in the past that neighbors get a little upset, um, when it turns out that the person next to them can do something that they can't. Um, I want to make sure that we follow the rules that are set forth in town. Um, and I realize that the, the, the previous court decision, I guess, is not strictly, strictly relevant at this point, but it does demonstrate that we've kind of gone down this road before. The town has provided some relief before and kind of where my head is. Like, how does that? How do we get past that? What's the plan to, to solve that in a meaningful way?
That sounds like a Maggie question. Maggie, let me circle back. So, let's talk about the issue of precedent. So, here we have a set of conditions. It's unique to this property. Uh, how do I get past my concern over this surfacing again and again and being forced to issue the same kind of approval simply because I did it here?
Um, so, that is a concern. It is a valid concern. And, um, like all land use matters, they're all supposed to stand on their own. Uh, and you can evaluate whether or not the circumstances by which, uh, circumstances by which the applicant's predecessors or him found themselves with an error. So, that's what has been presented this evening is that it wasn't intended to be 40 feet. It was intended to be 50 feet. And that was a question that I actually wanted to have answered this evening because in a, you know, an adjoining town back in the day when they did the frontage lot situation, back then, it was a 40-foot right of way that was required under the regulations, but today it's 50 feet. And so, you know, the towns have taken different positions on those. So, you'll need to evaluate whether or not the applicant meets the burden under, I think it's 11.2 or whatever the number is in your regs, for a waiver. And each and every application that would come before you seeking a waiver would need to meet a burden. The fact that you grant, it's sort of like a zoning board. The fact that a zoning board would grant a variance for a setback for a garage in one case, does not obligate the zoning board to grant a variance for a setback in a garage. In another case, they're all supposed to stand on their own. And so, the applicant has the burden to establish that, that it should be granted a waiver. Um, clearly you're sending a message this evening that, that's a bit of an uphill climb.
Okay, so thank you. So, so to restate that, is it fair to say that there could be a set of circumstances that exist on this application that would sway us toward granting the waiver? Whereas tomorrow, a similar application comes before us. The set of circumstances is just a little bit different and I'm not necessarily obligated to grant the same waiver.
That is correct. Each application stands on its own and has a burden of proof.
And it's the applicant's responsibility to delineate that set of circumstances that he or she believes warrants the waiver.
That's correct. Um, and the fact that this particular parcel has had some history with the zoning board, pardon me, the planning board, and then gone to court and then come back, as I said, is, it's starting on a clean slate, so it's irrelevant. You don't have to feel like, oh, my gosh, it's been to court once. We can't send it back again. Not that that's your intention, but my point is, is that it stands on its own at day one. And you, you would review this like any application under your regulations. That's why I asked actually the question as to whether or not the, um, the road widths are also incorporated in the zoning ordinances as they are in some towns. They're in both places. So, you have to do the ping pong, go to planning, go to zone and come back to planning. So, um, it remains to be seen. Uh, you know, Jim doesn't think they're in there, so, but we'll, we'll confirm that one way or the other. And I'm sure that Mr. Duhamel is perfectly capable of doing that as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, so, uh, Jim, anything from your end?
Um, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, there's, because at this point, uh, in the process, there's a lot I could potentially say about this. Um, we're still scoping it out as to what, you know, it's going to be. Um, I heard Mr. Prolet's asked a question, uh, could one of those eight lots be the affordable lot? Um, if the applicant was going to seek approval for seven lots, the 20% inclusionary zoning would be 1.4, which is rounded down to one. So, I guess one of them could be, one, one of the eight could be if you're asking for seven. But again, we don't even know at this point if it's going to be a conventional layout with, the preference is to go with, uh, a cluster. And if you're going to go with a cluster, I would say that in our subdivision regulations on page 115 I was looking at today is that if there's no more than seven lots in a cluster and the roadway is proposed to be a private road, and I believe, I believe this is being presented as ultimately a town road, that could, that could have some bearing on this 40-foot right of way issue as well. So, but again, in our sub regs right now, uh, it says that if it's no more than seven units and a private roadway, um, that the roadway could be built to planning board standards. So, I interpret that to mean that the planning board has its power to approve a 40-foot width right of way here in this case. But that remains to be seen. So, again, those are the issues as I see. Is it, is it, do we want a private road, public road? Cluster preferably, I guess, unless a conventional is proved to be better. And then once we figure out how many lots we're asking for, then we can apply the inclusionary zoning ordinance appropriately. I think that was a great idea by Mr. Prolet's, uh, is if they wanted to do it offsite in another location, al- along Main Street, I can think of a few, a few places. Um, that might be a great idea as well. So, it's up to the planning board what, what the board wants to see. But I'd ra, I'd rather see these, uh, more fundamental questions answered first before we even get there. I'd like to, I'd like to hear what Mr. Landry has to say. Um, and this, that can all be done at the master plan level when we come out for the public informational meeting with the master plan. Master plans change along the way before master plans are approved. So, this is, this is really the initial introduction of this to the town at this point. And we'll, we'll take the, you know, guidance that we've got from the planning board and the applicant can do factor that into their thinking when they come back for the master plan. So, we'll see what they, you know, it, it would be nice, as Emily said, if they come back with a master plan with some alternate development scenarios that might be amenable to the board. So, so I have.
Uh, thank you very much. Yeah, appreciate that. So, I might be thinking though, uh, unless I've misconstrued, um, I'd be thinking this is up for another pre-application. Uh, if, if we just focus on the issue of conventional versus cluster, uh, I, I know that I would really like to get that topic squared away uh, before we suggest that they move on to master plan.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, I would agree. That's, in this particular case here, that's entirely appropriate. And a good way to go, I think, from the applicant's standpoint as well, to avoid a lot of wasted time, uh, preparing master plans and notice, everything that goes along with a master plan. I, I agree with you. Another pre-app would be appropriate on this.
Okay, is there anything else we need to hear about tonight?
Um,
I have a question.
On this application, of course. Yes.
Yes, yes, to who? Someone else spoke at the same time I did. All right, my question is, the, the question over the 40-foot as opposed to 50-foot roadway, is there any hard concrete reason? Is there any hard concrete reason why it can't go to 50 feet and be brought into being as a town road? Now, this is just my opinion. I would think road maintenance over the next however many years would greatly outweigh the cost of making it 10 feet wider. You know, if we can get the, or not we, if the planner, not planner, excuse me, if the developer can find a way to make it 50 feet wide, it almost seems like it would be advantageous to do that so that the town maintains the road.
Al Diario, Ron, I think I follow your train of thought, but if it turns out to be a private road, then the equation might not be that difficult to solve. Why, do you think there's some advantage to the town taking over another 1,200 feet of road, or I'm sorry, whatever the number is? I would say no myself.
You were saying the opposite. It's the developer that would benefit from private to public.
Well, forgive me, but my-
That was my way of thinking. If it was a town road, the town is responsible for maintenance of the road. But if it's a private road, all the people in that cul-de-sac are responsible for taking care of it.
And I'm sorry, so what's the point?
Well, the point was, is there any big stumbling blocks going either way? Is there not enough lane to go 50 feet wide? Is it another reason why they only want to go 40 feet wide?
Yeah, there's not-
It almost seems like arguing over something that doesn't really need to be argued over.
Yeah, Al Diario, Ron, there's not 50 feet there.
Okay.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this discussion. There's only 40 feet.
That settles that. All right, thank you.
Okay, so, sorry, was there anything else?
Dave here. Could we touch on the cluster versus conventional? I guess, I guess what you're saying is, I really have to prove to you that the conventional is better. Is that, you know, how set in stone is it? I mean, do you guys want all new developments to be clustered? To me, I live in an HOA now, and I'm looking to leave that. So if you guys said there's no way you're going to have a conventional here, I could just try to build one house on it. I mean, I feel strongly against the cluster. So I have no problem trying to produce the documents and what we would need to prove that. But there's really low, low interest in this becoming a cluster. So, you know, but I, you know, you guys tell me what I've got to do, and that's what we'll do.
Let me, Al Diario, let me give you some thoughts. First of all, you need to go back and read our subdivision regulations. If memory serves correct, the cluster is where we're pointing applicants. Because we have some objectives that we're trying to accomplish in our town. And two-acre lots doesn't do it. So that considered, I'm not, I also want to take the perspective that I'm I'm not trying to tell you what to do with your property, but I am. So there are other alternatives that you might discuss with your designer that after you review our cluster subdivision ordinance, you might take elements from that ordinance and meld them into your conventional subdivision. Don't forget, you have to prove that the conventional subdivision is superior. There is a chance that you can do that. That's the whole idea behind presenting us with the alternative versions. I'm not going to tell you that it's easy, but it's not set in stone, to use your terms.
Okay, well, then I would, whatever, whatever, whatever those elements are, we welcome a little direction.
I'm not designing your project. Go hunt them up. The objective is to embody the characteristics of a cluster subdivision in your proposal. To the extent that you can do that, the chances of your garnering the planning board's support increases. To the extent that you fail, chances are you're going to be directed to do a cluster subdivision. Am I being explicit enough?
I understand. I understand what you're looking for, Mr. Chairman, so we'll go over it.
Well, I could use a little more clarification. When you said two-acre lots, just don't do it. What did you mean by that?
So shall we talk about-
Considering buffers?
Want to talk about design philosophy here? Listen, you show, if I look at your property, if we take lot number eight, just for an example, all I see here is someone coming in and clear-cutting this lot to put their house in. They're moving down from another part of the state. Their idea of a piece of property is every tree is cut down. Okay, so that doesn't do it for our community. And that's why we're trying to move away from conventional subdivisions. They don't, they don't protect the characteristics of our town necessarily. Again, there are elements that you can incorporate that would accomplish that, but you're not doing it in a conventional subdivision. See where I'm coming from? Long pause. So if your idea of a conventional subdivision is to come in and clear-cut every lot so you can put your house on it, that's probably not what this planning board is going to approve.
So we'll look at buffers to the lots, on individual lots, and try to have a few alternatives that the board might support as opposed to a full cluster with narrow one-acre lots.
So I would still suggest, and planning board members, please feel free to add, you still need to come in with a cluster subdivision. But then, if you also wanted to come in with an alternative to try and sway us to get over this superior, I'm prepared to at least take a look at. I'm speaking for myself.
This is Emily. I would agree. I think there's some creative things that could be done. You have a lot of space. Some alternative layouts in various configurations. I echo what Al said about reading the cluster development section of the subdivision regs. It talks about open space and some of the priorities that the planning board's looking for preserving in new developments here.
Okay, so speaking to the, Al Diario, speaking to the applicant, have we given you at least some ideas as we should in our pre-application discussion?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, as a developer, would rather create no cut buffers for sidewalks, open space, park, whatever. You know, I'd like to be free on the lot that I have to do what I want. And that has a value when I go to, you know, sell the lots to other people. Like I said, I'm coming from an HOA now, and I have all that. And it's the reason I'm looking to make a move. So we will generate a plan with some mixed-in features, and we'll see what you guys think of it.
There we go. Very good. So it's a pre-application meeting. There are no motions or decisions made. As long as you're walking away with some solid direction, and I think Chris understands exactly where we're coming from, I think we've done our job. So if there's nothing further, I would say be in touch with the planner with regards to scheduling a second pre-application. That would be my advice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, and that concludes new business. So moving on, we have a solicitor's report.
You're probably tired of hearing from me already tonight.
No, we never get tired.
Okay, so I will not go take a ton of time. I just wanted to touch on a few things. Presumably, you've all received a copy of the revity memo, the appeal memo that I have filed on the board's behalf with the zoning board of review. There are some additional hard copies that I delivered to Jim because the attorneys didn't need them, so there are some binders in the planner's office. That matter was supposed to be heard last week, but it was continued. They didn't have a quorum at the zoning board of review. So that has been continued to a future date, and I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's in the next few weeks. Second item on the report is there was an inquiry last month when you were talking about the Kamoli Solar Project in regard to the front condominium unit and whether it could be used for access to the middle unit, which is proposed for the solar project. So I looked at that matter. I've prepared a memo. And as you know, it has been, it was my recommendation that the matter be referred to the zoning official for determination. And I believe Jim has sent that along to the zoning official. I do not know when to expect a response in that. But I also have scheduled a meeting with the town solicitors. We haven't actually formally met ourselves yet, but we're going to do a Zoom on Monday, and there's a couple of items that we want to touch base on, that being one of them. Jim, have we heard back from the zoning official, or I'm assuming no?
Mr. Lamphier, Town Planner, I did discuss this matter with the zoning official. And I believe, I believe we're going to be looking for some guidance from our solicitors on this. We did, okay, off the top of my head, there was four questions that you were asked there, and I believe three of them, we agreed. The answer is no, and one was a yes. But so, yes, based upon the informal discussion that we had, I would say it's probably going to be a tough, a tough road for them to have access across there.
Okay, so I will follow up with the solicitors on, we have a Zoom meeting scheduled on Monday at 4:30. So once that's concluded, and they've given whatever advice they need to give to their zoning official, then I suspect that matter will move along and we'll have an answer at some point. The important point of that memo really is that zoning matters are not within the jurisdiction of the planning board, and nor do, nor can we be coaxed or pushed, you know, into rendering zoning decisions. It's just not our jurisdiction. And so you're going to see that recommendation again. There's another one perking along here where the recommendation is that it may need to go to zoning for a determination. But, you know, it's really important that we stay in our lane. And that one of the cases we're going to talk about tonight sort of talks about that. Actually, it was the case that we just, we talked about at the last, the last application that was just before us, the man that had gone to the court, you know, there it said that the planning board, you know, that, pardon me, the zoning board had had no authority to limit the subdivision of a parcel. So the zoning board had stepped out of its lane into the planning board's lane. And so it's very important that we stay in our respective lanes because once you act beyond the scope of your jurisdiction, it's illegal. So you don't want to do that. And so then, the other thing is that I sent you two cases. They're not hot-fintech cases, but I just thought we could take a few minutes every meeting or every other meeting just to give you like, you know, land use 101, land use law 101. You may already know these issues, and so I apologize if I'm telling you something you already know or bringing to your attention something you already know. But I thought it would be helpful to, you know, bring land use cases that may have some bearing on the things that come before you from time to time. So the first one is the Davis case. Let me pull that up. And this is a case that was just recently decided in January, so not even a month ago. Okay, and in this case, the legal issue that was discussed was the exhaustion of administrative remedies. And this was a case where a fellow had basically plowed through a road, was claiming rights to use it, et cetera, et cetera. And then, when the town shut him down, he sued the town. And the town's defense to the case was, hey, he never even applied for this road opening. And so it's prematurely before you. He has to, what's known as exhaust his administrative remedies at the lower level before he can come to court. And the court agreed and said, listen, you didn't apply for a road, you haven't been denied. And so basically, you're not harmed yet. You just, you know, kind of went off half-cocked and didn't follow the proper procedure. So it's really important for folks to exhaust their administrative remedies at the administrative level before they have standing to appeal something or to file suit in the Superior Court. So that's what that case stands for. Did anybody have any questions, you know, from reading it at all? Okay, and then the second one was a little unusual. And my first read of it was like, oh, that's the importance of recusing early. But then, when I read it again, I thought, oh, I don't think so. So this is the Donatelli case, and this was also just recently decided in October by the justice that is actually still sitting in the Superior Court in Washington County. And in this case, the zoning, this was a zoning board case, and the zoning board is required to have five votes. So the planning board doesn't necessarily have that. It's not a statutory requirement. So if you had four members that showed up one night, as you did recently a few months ago, and you could have had a three-to-one, you could have had a four-to-zero, and those would have been satisfactory. But with a zoning board, statutorily, they are required to have five voting members, which is the reason why the revity appeal that I mentioned at the beginning of the report was not able to be heard because they didn't have five voting members. So that's required by state statute. So in this case, what happened was they got to the point of voting on the application, and one guy said, he wanted to, he wanted to recuse. And he probably should have said abstain, but he said, I want to recuse. And it was, well, why do you want to do that? And he said, I'm conflicted. And when I first read this case, I thought he meant like he had an ethics conflict and he had to actually recuse. When I read the case again, I thought, I think what he was saying was, I'm conflicted. I don't know which, I don't know how to decide this case. You know, I have some feelings this way, some feelings that way. And so what happened was, the solicitor was saying, you know, you got to vote. We need five votes. You got to vote. And so he voted, and the Superior Court said, nope. When you said, I'm recused, that was the end of it, and you voted illegally, and there should have, you know, you should have had a, basically, zoning board, you should have an alternate there for this purpose. So I, you know, it's one of the things we talked about early on was the importance of having alternates and the importance, of course, not recusing at the end of a hearing. If you have a reason to recuse, if you have an ethics reason why you cannot participate, you have an obligation to disclose that early on in the process. So when I first, like I said, when I first read this, I was like, Jesus, that's so basic. Why wouldn't you have recused earlier? And then I read it again, I said, oh, he didn't mean conflicted in the sense that I need to recuse ethically. It was, I'm conflicted. I don't know which way I should go on this case. So anyway, that's law school land use 101 for tonight. And, you know, like I said, we'll periodically do a couple of these. If you have any particular questions about land use or your regulations or anything you'd want me to address in the future when we have a light night like tonight, I'm happy to do so with the chairman's permission. And certainly, I will update you on any cases that were involved with litigation. Hopefully, there aren't too many of those. It was, and I would also say, I commend all of you for the time and energy that you put into this planning board and the applications that come before you. When I took up the revity appeal, I needed to, I got the big box from Jim. I had to read the big box, understand the big box, and then write the brief on the big box. And, you know, some of those minutes went on for 50 pages. You had some very long, extensive hearings- You had some very long, extensive hearings and. You really, you should be commended for the amount of time and energy you put into it. Hopkinton's lucky to have all of you. That's all I have.
Very good, Maggie. Thank you very much. I will say on that last case, first of all, thank you very much for the. Land use 101. I I think that's a great idea. I know that you're on top of this stuff every day, to the extent that you think we might learn something from. Somebody else's problems. Please bring them forward so that we don't have to relearn them. I did read that second case. It caught my eye. I had to go back and read it twice, I guess, as you did, and I was still topsy turvy over what transpired there, but. I thought that was a very unusual one. And again, I appreciate you bringing both of these to our attention. Good, so moving on, planners' report.
Jim Lampier, planner, none.
Correspondence and updates. Apparently none. Public forum. Is there anyone left in the audience?
Yes.
Let's hear what you have to say.
I'm going to read off the last four digits, eight, two, two, two. And please press star six and state your name for the record.
Good evening. It's Joe Moreau, Old Depot Road. So you thought we left, huh, Al? We're still here.
I knew that you would be out there, Joe.
I want to compliment the chair. I also want to compliment the planning board members as our solicitor pointed out for the work that you guys do. Especially tonight, where you guys really held your cool and try to calm the situation. I like the idea that the solicitor mentioned, and I read them today, about the court examples. I think it's a good training tool. I know the town council is working on having the. Chief of Police, for an example, give a report and kind of give us an update on what's going on in our town. One thing that I've been trying to get a clarification on, and maybe the solicitor could look into this for us, is. Title forty-two, State Affairs and Government, which is chapter forty-two dash forty-six. Open Meetings, Section forty-two, forty-six dash six. Again, I think it's a good training tool, especially when there's new residents, new folks on the boards and commissions that. What can I say, what I should not say. So that we all learn. And I think that might be something that we could get some training assistance on that when we have time during our agenda. But again, thanks for what you guys do, and I appreciate your help. Take care.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Anyone else out there?
Yes. Please state your name for the record after pressing star six.
Hi, it's Eric Bibler. I just wanted to note that. I sent a letter to all of you to, on the planning board, to the chair and everyone on the planning board on January sixth. I know this. This project is not a topic of discussion tonight. But I highlighted a number of very significant concerns on the Kamoli project. Over and above this issue with the road. And. I'll just pick one issue and I'll tell you what I'd like the planning, I'd like to ask the planning board to do about it. In the town council hearings. I did ask the question whether or not, this is an unusual situation. It had three land condominium units. And I did ask the question whether. It would need to, it would require a land subdivision from your board, from the planning board. Because a condominium unit is. Is not the same as a lot. And in fact, I took the trouble of going to town hall and getting the condominium declarations, and I sent you a link to those. And these three land condominium units all share. Ten feet of property, you know, around the perimeter. So. I did ask the question in the, and I I had asked through the chair that the town solic, the former town solicitor address it. He declined, and the president of the town council instead invited the applicant to give, the applicant's attorney to give her opinion. But what really matters for the planning board is to determine whether or not a land subdivision is required. To split zone this lot into two residential units. You know, the road goes over one of them you just discussed tonight. And one that would have been rezoned commercial special. So I know that the planning solicitor does not work for me, and my requests. Don't really mean anything unless some member of the planning board reviews that. Letter that I sent on January sixth and decides. That it merits, you know, further inspection. So I would, I would please. Beg beg you to take a look at that and decide whether or not these issues need resolution. Solicitor Hogan also mentioned, in a different context tonight. Possible requirement to following this procedure known as precedence of approvals. Which is invoked. Which is required after state statute and also in our subdivision regulations. In certain situations that involve the planning board and one other board. So it could be, in the instance cited tonight, the planning board. And the zoning board. But it can also be the planning board and the town council. So the reason I mention this is that. The Kamoli project. Was obligated, was required to follow this procedure on precedence of approvals. It was required to get an advisory opinion on the consistency with the comp plan. You did that. The planning board reviewed it and issued an adverse advisory opinion saying it is by unanimous vote that it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. It was supposed to go next to, back to the planning board. For master plan approval. That didn't happen. Instead, it went to the town council. And the town council granted conditional zoning approval. Now, the reason why that's a big issue is if you read your subdivision regulations. Number one. Under Article three point two point two, it clearly states that you have to follow this precedence of approvals procedure. But the other point of interest here, which I think you need to settle before this project comes before you. Is on any. Development proposal that you review. And and issue an opinion on. You cannot, under the subdivision regulations under three point five, you cannot approve it. Unless. You make certain required findings or. Art findings are required to make. And the very first one is. Three point five point one, the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive community plan. So you've already found that this project is not consistent with the community plan. It's gone to the town council, which gave conditional zoning approval anyway. And now it's back to you, and I don't think that the planning board necessarily has to. Agree with the town council's opinion on the consistency of the comprehen, with the comprehensive plan. But in any case, it's sort of a mess. So, you know, my question then is. What does the planning board do when this comes back to you out of order? Are you now obligated? To somehow make a required finding that's completely contrary to the finding that you already made on the consistency of the comprehensive plan? Could you simply reject it because you still think it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan? I don't know, but. This is not the first time that this has happened, and I think we got to get it straight. And I think for that, you're going to need an opinion. From your planning board solicitor. So I raised a couple of other issues in that letter. I think it's very important that you get to the bottom of it. Tonight, we've already seen in Solicitor Hogan's. Opinion to you, or I guess she summarized her, you know, her findings on revity. And you've been informed tonight. That the, in her interpretation, that the minimum setback between commercial structures on a solar project. And the boundary of the residential zone is 100 feet. I can give you a list of projects in Hopkinton. Where our former town solicitor and town planner interpreted our ordinances to mean that the minimum. Boundary to the residential zone from structures on solar projects. Is twenty-five feet. So as the solicitor said, in this discussion about setting precedents. Every application, every application stands on its own. Just because you got it wrong before doesn't mean that we should keep. I mean, the town got it wrong. I don't mean to personalize it, but you know, just because the town got it wrong previously doesn't mean that we should continue repeating the error. And I think it's really important to get this right because really, all you have to do. Is travel over to the Maxon Hill site. Where the developer cut all of the standing trees up to 25 feet. Of the abutters' stone walls with just catastrophic. Consequences, and it turns out that. The abutters were right about that. They deserved to have a hundred foot buffer. That was violated. Now they're living it with it, and there are several. Projects in Hopkinton, not just that one that fit that description. I I, in closing, I know we can't, you know, it's not right to discuss the project, but I just want to refer to my letter. I want to ask that some member, preferably the chair, refer that letter to the. To the towns, to the planning solicitor and ask that these these questions be resolved before we go into a hearing. And don't know what to do with them. I think it's going to come up on other other projects as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. Any other hands? Okay, very good. The date of our next meeting is March third. And unless there's anything else that can legitimately come before us, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Carolyn. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
They have a motion.
Second.
Second. It's for discussion. All in favor? DiOrio, yes.
Prowitz, yes.
Lindelof, yes.
Light, yes.
Jamshini, yes.
And there we have it. Very good. Listen, thank you all very much for your time. See you next time.